April twenty seventh, twenty twenty, item one on the agenda of the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, no, God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord. Thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord God, we come to lift up our city and pray, Lord God, today, Lord God, we lift up our first responders, our essential workers on today, Lord God. We continue to lift up our government officials, Lord. Lord God, we lift up each person in our city. Lord God, that we continue to keep them safe, Lord God. Lord God, and we pray right now for the families that have already lost a loved one, Lord God. Lord, we thank you right now and all these things that you're going to do, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Carmen Rolkop.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Benez.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres. Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Love the record show, eight present electronically with zero absent, absent.
Like we've done on these electronic meetings before we go to reading of the minutes, the mayor is here, and mayor, you got any updates for us on the situation as it currently stands?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you again. Can't wait till we're all back to somewhat normal business. We had, we did our coronavirus task force meeting today on Zoom, streamed it live on Facebook, had a big audience. I know a lot of council members participated in that. Since that time, we've had updated numbers from the Lake County Health Department about City Hammond. We have two hundred and thirty seven positive cases of coronavirus, which is only two more than we had yesterday, which was only four more than we had the day before, which was about ten more from the day before that. Unfortunately, in our city, we've had ten fatalities due to coronavirus thus far. Indiana has, last I checked, I apologize, eighty-one thousand Hoosiers tested, which is one point four percent of all of our population, eight hundred and thirteen fatalities statewide, fifteen thousand plus positive COVID- nineteen cases, which is eighteen percent of the people that take the test turn out positive. I think that's important to remember because I know a lot of people that were getting sick and thought for sure that they had the virus. And when you consider probably seventy-five percent of the people that are taking the COVID- nineteen test are sick when they're taking it, and only eighteen percent of the people that take the test are turning out positive, I think that's encouraging, something to keep in mind. However, out of the positives, there's a high fatality rate, which is scary about this also. We only have a few employees that have tested positive. I think there's only two employees out right now. We've had employees cycle in and out. It's gone fairly well. We've had a lot of employees test, and the test comes back negative, which is encouraging. That goes back to something I mentioned earlier. But only two employees are out at this moment, which is encouraging. We're still following the same protocol that we started initially when we went into lockdown. Trying to think, testing, you guys, you guys all know what's going on with the antibody test and with the swab test. We're getting for our first responders about a twenty-four to forty-eight hour turnaround from St. Margaret's Hammond, which is excellent. You know, when we first came into this situation, I remember we had a firefighter whose wife tested positive, and we set the firefighter in to get tested, and it took eight days before we got a result back, which was a nightmare. And that was early, though, and it's gotten a lot better. So testing for first responders is going a lot better. I'm not sure about testing non-first responders. Thankfully, right now, the only tests we're really required to get is for our first responders, including our public works workers. Public Works is on time, picking up garbage on time, picking up, Republic Recycling is picking up on time. City Hall, as you all know, is closed for general business still, as per the governor's orders. We only have skeleton crews working every day in City Hall. I have one person in my office besides my chief of staff and myself. They're on shifts, basically. I know the council office is manned with their employee. There's a couple employees down in each other department, but for the most part, there's a dozen, maybe a little bit more than a dozen people working every day in City Hall. We're still taking calls, getting ready, you know, for when the governor gives us the word to open back up. Last council meeting, Councilman Tyler brought up a great point at the end of the meeting, and I went back and talked to my controller, and I got back ahold of Councilman Tyler and Councilman Torres that night and told them I agreed with their assessment was, initially, when we got into this situation, through executive order, I froze all gaming money. And obviously, I think most of you realize why we did that. It's well intentioned because we want to be able to weather the storm and make sure we don't have to have mass layoffs. And I, I know you guys know that's why we did it. However, unintentionally, I didn't think about the ramifications of somebody like Councilman Tyler, whose district saved money and rolled in Councilman Torres, same boat, who rolled money over from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty, and they had a good amount coming over. The argument was it's not fair to penalize the districts that saved in nineteen to twenty. I didn't anticipate that when we made our executive order. I agreed at the last council meeting that twenty nineteen money, that's not fair to freeze that. And I agreed with the council. And since then, I've instructed my controller and chief of staff, and everybody's aware that twenty nineteen money is not part of the executive order, that we're holding back on twenty twenty money until the casino opens, we start making miscellaneous revenue again, because that's the problem with our budget right now is, besides the fact that casinos closed, which is problem number one. Problem number two is our property tax draw is going to be two months later than normal and presumably much smaller percentage of people paying as we're accustomed to, which is going to impact our budget. Problem number three is all the miscellaneous revenues that we anticipated being in the budget because they're there every year, dog tags, revenue from, you know, facilities like the Sportsplex and the Shepherd Center and, you know, Civic Center, all that's gone. All that's, everything's closed. We're not making miscellaneous revenues. So as far as the City Hammond's budget's concerned, it's, it's a catastrophe. But we're no different than corporate America. We're no different than state governments across the state right now. That's, we're making no income and we have nothing but expenses, and that's concerning, which is why we froze twenty twenty gaming revenues. So if anybody has any questions, I'm willing to answer. I mean, you know, I know you have a council meeting to run, so does anybody have any other questions? I just wanted to throw together a few things I thought were important to bring up with the council.
Yeah, mayor, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I just said, it's off, it's off what you were talking about, mayor, but I was curious regarding crime in our city. My guess is it's down, but do we have any data that, you know, versus normal time without the virus? Just not crime, but people gathering at homes, et cetera. I know they had an issue in Chicago about that and large parties, but specifically domestic violence, is that, do you have any way of tracking that? Is it up or?
Councilman, I wish I was better organized. I get updates from the Hammond Police Department every month in regards to crime stats. We usually post them if there's something to brag about, or we post them if there's something to be concerned about as well. And like you anticipate, Councilman, the violent crime is significantly down across the board. Things that you would anticipate, domestic violence calls have gone up, obviously. I mean, unfortunately, and obviously, that's gone up. Things that, you know, larceny has gone up, you know, big box stores are our biggest problem when it comes to larceny. Larceny is stealing. So if somebody gets picked up for shoplifting, that counts as a crime towards our city, and that's spiked as well. And that's understandable also because a lot more people are shopping in Walmarts and a lot more people are desperate. But violent crime happily has gone down, obviously. We had two weeks, two sort of normal weeks in March, and then it fell off a cliff after that. As far as violent crimes concerned, violent crime has been nonexistent in the month of April for the most part, too. We have a few unfortunate incidents here and there, but the crime stats look great. That's something we can be proud of. The budget is something we need to worry about, but.
Yeah, I was just curious about that.
I'll get my latest stats and forward them to you. I apologize. I don't have them immediately available, but I will find them, and I'll copy all nine council people onto it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
Sir, President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Piggybacking off that, yes, mayor, thank you. If you could get us that update to know where we are budgetly, since we have been shut down, that would be great to know. Also, I know that our number from when we were at the last council meeting was sixty, and now we're up to two thirty-one. Is there something that we can continue to do to encourage our residents to mask for? I know that when I go out, I don't see a lot of people wearing masks, protective gear, things like that. There's something that we can continue to do across the board in encouraging them to stay safe and keep that social distance. That's something that we really want to do because that number did jump extremely, um, two weeks ago to now, from sixty to two thirty-one with those ten deaths. So that's definitely a concern, and then continuing to encourage our parents and our students to get their work done, even in their e-learning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. President, I want to thank a couple people, Lake County Health Department. I'm not sure what, who the doctor's name is, but whoever is in charge of it put together a great website. That was with the help of Commissioner Repay and the City Hammond and Councilman Dave Hamm were helping us a lot because Councilwoman was on me early saying, mayor, you know, you're giving us Indiana numbers, and we know the Lake County numbers, but can you break them down by zip code? Can you tell me how many people live in Hammond? And I appreciate Councilwoman Katrina bringing that up, and I couldn't answer her question, and I hate when I get asked a question by the council I can't answer. So I started leaning on Commissioner Repay, and I started leaning on Councilman Hamm, and they started leaning on the Health Department to not only give countywide numbers, but to break them down by zip code, and they did that. And since that time, we could literally click on Hammond and see how many positive cases are in the City Hammond. And it changed, and we've been tracking it since the Councilwoman asked me that. And right now, we're still slowly going up, but it seems like right now, and hopefully it doesn't continue to go up, and, you know, obviously, we can't let our guard down. But right now, two hundred and thirty-five positive cases is, you know, it's unfortunate, and that's something we all have to consider when we're out shopping. There's two hundred and thirty-five people that live in the City Hammond that are positive that we know of. Now, that goes back to Councilwoman's earlier point that when, even when we do relax and we could actually come out, go outside and show up to work like we used to, we're still going to have to wear masks in public. We're still going to have to socially distance. We're still going to wash our hands five, ten times every day. We're still going to have to stay home if we're a little bit sick. We're going to probably be doing fever checks in City Hall. We're going to have more hand sanitizer locations. We're probably not going to shake hands anymore until we find a vaccine, you know. So just because it's possible on Friday Governor Holcomb lifts the shelter in place, and if Governor Holcomb lifts the shelter in place, presumably, the following Monday, City Hall would be open. But just because that's the case doesn't mean we can let our guard down, like the Councilwoman said.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just one more thing. So mayor, when we, if, when that happens, that he lifts the order, is there something that we can put in place for our residents to make a mandate or an ordinance or something that can require them to have those specific things on?
Yes, ma'am. You sure could. You could create a city ordinance, and we can make it just during the COVID- nineteen crisis, that it's, if you're in public, you must wear a mask. Absolutely, the council has that power. I would support an ordinance that was created like that. Obviously, hopefully, three years from now, it won't become necess, it won't be necessary to wear a mask in public like it is during this crisis. But if the council and their wisdom thought that was a good idea, it would be something I totally supported. And you can make it and talk to Attorney Berger, just make it last during the crisis, you know, figure out some type of word, terms of art. But that's something the council could do. We do not have something like that on the books, and it was, be something I would support as well.
Thank you, mayor.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Mayor, there's just one question I saw on our live feed here, and someone wanted to know if they had a permit to pay for, like at the police department. How would they go about doing that right now?
The police department's front desk is still open, Councilman Warple, for a lot of reasons. One of the reasons is if you get your car towed, which still could happen, we're not towing this frequently, but if your car is towed, you need to get, you know, a clearance from the PD before you can get your car back. So the PD has still been open. The front door is open. You walk in, there's an officer right there. Social distancing is taking place, but you still go to the police department like normal.
Okay. That was just a question I saw on Facebook.
No problem. You know, one other thing I want to talk to the council about is the question of the day has been, what are we going to do if Governor Holcomb lifts his stay at home, you know? And I would like just the council to chew on this because I think it's possible the governor lifts a stay at home on Friday. I think it's definitely possible. He's been hinting that he's going to relax these stay-at-home restrictions on Friday. And I just got a notice in the mail today about Horseshoe Casino's employees being laid off. You know, they covered their checks for a while, but there's over two thousand employees at the Hammond Horseshoe Casino that are jobless, and that does not count the tourism industry, the hotel industry, the restaurant industry. There could be ten thousand people in our city that are unemployed right now, and, and there's no income coming in, and they're scared. And I, you know, I'm being pressured to, you know, mayor, if Governor Holcomb, I'm hearing this a lot, you know, if Governor Holcomb lifts that order, you're, you're going to keep Hammond shut down, right? And I say, why, you know, and they, because he's the governor, and they say, well, if you leave Hammond open, all these people from Illinois are going to come in here and get us sick. And the thing is, I'm having trouble with this, and I, and I'd like your guys' input because I'm having trouble telling the ten thousand people that have no income right now, no, even though the governor lifted, lifted the stay at home, I think you guys should stay at home. I'm having trouble with that one, and I want to know what you guys think because this could be on our plate on Friday, and I'm inclined to follow the governor's lead. I believe in the chain of command. He's the governor of the state of Indiana. If the governor thinks it's wise to open our state, are we going to stand in the way and try to keep it shut down? That's the question of the day, and I'm having trouble justifying to ten thousand people that are out of work why they need to stay at home another week. And that goes back to Councilman Katrina's points earlier, that just because the stay at home is lifted doesn't mean we can go start shaking hands, hugging, and, you know, crowding on top of each other. There's going to be social distancing. There's going to be masks in public. But, you know, I don't think it's right to have City Hall closed, and I don't really think it's right for me to tell people, stay at home if, even if, you know, besides the fact the governor thinks you should be free. So I'm interested in what your opinion is on that. Thank you, guys. I'm sorry for talking so long.
No problem, mayor. Does anybody else have any questions for the mayor or comments on what he just stated? I was, I'm going to assume, Councilman Spitali.
Yeah, I was just wondering, was there going to be security guards at each entrance of City Hall when it opens up?
Mr. President?
Mayor.
Absolutely, Councilman Spitali. We, I mean, we have to, we, we, there is a team effort going on right now on what the post-shelter-in-place looks like in City Hall, and we probably would have controlled exit, only one entrance. And at that entrance, there'd be temperature checks. Obviously, we do have security guards in City Hall. We'd literally be sort of like the old days when we first took over Councilman Mark. When we walked in, they used to have a security guard to give you like a metal detector test and all that. It's not going to be like that, but we'll check your temperature and maybe ask you a couple questions before you come in. And if there's too many people in City Hall, you may have to wait outside like we do at the grocery stores. But there's a team that's putting these recommendations together right now, Councilman Spitali.
Is there going to be any questions asked, asked about on a, on a form when they come in, and like if they had a fever in the last fourteen days? Have they been out of the country lately or anything like that? Because it's working out and he does a business that I do.
I, I'm presuming, I'm not attending these meetings. There's a whole task force that's talking about these issues, and I don't want to speak for them. But, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's part of it or not. I know temperature checks, we have thermometers that measure human temperatures now. The ones we got initially were for industrial uses, you know, but we have ones that are accurate. If you shoot somebody's forehead, it'll tell you within a couple tenths of a, of a degree what their temperature is, so. But like I said, Councilman, people are going to be wearing masks in City Hall. I mean, so.
Yeah. I appreciate it, mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman.
Does anybody else have questions or comments?
Mr. President.
Was that Councilman Emerson?
Yeah. Mayor, I, I, you know, I wouldn't want to be you right now because I know that Ohio extended their closing date today. Illinois has, and that makes, I don't know what Michigan did, but someone told me they did, too. And that makes us, if we open it up just a little, that makes people want to come over here. On the other hand, Illinois people come over here for gas all the time. So, I mean, with, with all the restrictions you talked about, it's, it's a tough call, you know. In my heart, I don't think we should, but I know people want to get back to work if, if they're out of work. So, I mean, it's, it's, boy, I'm not, I'm not being very helpful, but it's a tough spot, I think.
No, I appreciate it, Councilman. I had a friend of mine called me up earlier. We were having this conversation, and she worked for government. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Not for Hammond, by the way, okay? And she said, are you really thinking about opening City Hall on Monday? I said, well, if the governor opens the state, you're asking if I'm going to keep City Hall shut down. And she said, I guess, yeah, that's what I'm asking you. I said, you know, what do you think? And she said, I, I think you're crazy if you open City Hall on Monday. And I said, well, you're getting a paycheck right now, right? She said, yeah. And I said, well, it's a lot different for you than it is for ten thousand Hammond residents that have no paycheck right now. They don't have a paycheck. They don't know how they're going to pay for dinner. And that's the thing that's tough is if Governor Holcomb says, okay, everybody go to work, and Mayor McDermott and Hammond Councilor say, no, stay in your house. We're telling ten thousand people that have no income to keep not making money, and I'm having trouble with this. And there's two thousand people in one shot at Horseshoe Casino that are losing their job right now. They're getting, they're not getting paid. That's two thousand that we know of. So that's the thing, Councilman, and it's a rough issue. I agree, Councilman Emerson.
Well, I was going to compliment every, all the kids for staying out of like Edison Park and actually Riverside, too. So is that included in your gradual open up if, if it comes to that, opening a park?
We had this conversation today in regards to parks specifically, park facilities, you know, like basketball, no way. You know, anything with contact, baseball, unfortunately, no. Basketball, volleyball, no. Skateboard park, probably not because the kids get all close to each other in the skateboard park. But like, you know, riding your bike still, okay, throwing a ball in the park, something like that. But we still have to enforce social distancing. So anything like your, your soccer fields that the kids love to go to, we got to keep on policing it, unfortunately.
Okay. Anybody else with any further questions? Go ahead, Councilman Tyler.
I just have one quick question, mayor. Just to, I've gotten a lot of questions about where people can get tested. And I know in our COVID, our task force meetings, we talked about only if they have symptoms, then they should, one, reach out to their general healthcare provider and figure out a pathway to get tested there. Outside of that, I know that, what is it, the Midwest Health Clinic or something like that is doing testing, testing in Munster. Can you talk a little bit about anything else that, that people should know with regards to the symptoms of being tested?
I agree with you, Councilman. Until more tests become available, and, and if you're not showing symptoms and you're not a first responder, it's going to be hard to get a test. And I know that Maryville High School is testing for the general public, and I know that in Gary, I want to say St. Timothy's in Gary is testing. I don't think there's anything closer than St. Timothy's. And then, you know, you still have St. Margaret's will test you if you're in there for a reason. And then, you know, like if you're in there for a medical procedure, they'll test you before that kind of stuff. But I'll be honest with you, Councilman, for regular member of the public to get tested, unless you get real sick, I still think it's hard. And, and right now, our ambulance pickups are way down because of what we call a doorstep triage, where they literally, the firefighter will come up to your window, ask you questions, and basically, unless you're showing severe breathing problems or like severe fever, and you're just, you're basically worried about your, your life, they're trying not to take you to the hospital because once you get to the hospital, they're just going to turn you around and send you back home again, unless you're needing to go on a ventilator. That's really, if you're having major breathing difficulties, that's when you're going to the hospital right now. If your fever is extremely high, like one oh three or higher, you're going to the hospital. But that's, right now, they're still, and I talked to St. Margaret's this morning, Councilman, I know you were on the call. They're at sixty percent, sixty percent full, forty percent vacancy right now. So they're doing a good job of policing their hospital so they're not overfull also. But that's a good, I mean, I wish I could answer that better, Councilman, but I think if you're not showing symptoms, it's real hard to get tested until they come out with, you know, more prevalent testing.
I have one more, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Is there anything that we are doing for the senior homes and the assisted living facilities dealing with testing or anything like that? Or if we have seen numbers come from those entities that we wouldn't normally see? And the other thing is, just like the governor, I know he's monitoring data and will continue to monitor data for our city so that we can do what we have to do to be best for our, our residents.
We're on a conference call every week, twice a week, as you know, Councilwoman, you're on the calls also with Huber Humphrey Homes, I mean, Hammond Housing Authority, Golden Manor, Silver Oak, Renaissance. We've been in communication with them from the beginning of this outbreak, and we got the Lake County Health Department involved as well. I know the Fire Department's been really involved as well. That is really probably the most vulnerable places. The ones that we just mentioned in the City Hammond are those identity housing, you know, long-term care facilities. And we're very concerned. We've been communicating a lot. I know the Lake County Health Department's working with them closely as well. I know there's been a couple positives, but, you know, knock on wood, seems like we're weathering the storm thus far, and God knows, I hope it continues that way because those, from right from the beginning, Councilwoman, scare the heck out of me. I mean, those are where we usually find our problems in the country, so hopefully we get through it in Hammond.
Thanks, mayor.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
One more thing, Councilman. Today, six forty-five, hopefully, it's seven o'clock today. There's a parade that's leaving from the Hammond Police Department going to St. Margaret's to thank the healthcare workers. I'm going to leave here in a few minutes to head that way, and I know the council is all invited as well. If you guys want to participate, we're driving our cars over, thanking our healthcare workers. Maybe you guys could catch it on the way home. So thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. Okay. Moving on the agenda, item number three, reading of the minutes. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make the motion we approve minutes as presented in our packet.
Motion's been made, seconded by?
Second.
Second, motion been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? I'll just say that we all received in our packet a letter from Lori Kazulo that we could add to the minutes under public expression if I, if anybody would like to make that motion. If I can read it, it's a real brief one. It just says, dear members of the Hammond Common Council, I had the opportunity to view the April thirteenth meeting, which was conducted and utilizing Zoom. While all in all, I felt the video conference was a success, I was disappointed that no agenda was available online prior to the meeting. The last agenda available was March twenty-third. Additionally, I would suggest an agenda that includes the Zoom meeting numbers so the public would be better prepared for the meeting. Thank you in advance. So if anybody would like to make the motion that we add that into the minutes on the public expression.
Still move. Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander and seconded by Councilman Spitali. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Now for approval of the minutes. The motion was made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Spitali, I believe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Motion approved claims, starting with April eighth to twenty twenty through April twenty-second, twenty twenty. Claims number nineteen oh four to twenty-one thirty-five in the amount of nineteen million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Rakos to approve the claims. Motion been made by Councilman Raycos to approve the claim, seconded by Councilwoman Benes. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca. Carmen Roca.
There we go. Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Benes.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yeah.
Worple.
Yes, let the record show, eight in favor, one absent, zero opposed. Public hearings there are none. Communications, does anybody have anything on the communications? Does anybody have anything on the communications? Communications are now closed. Committee reports, are there any committee reports? Does anybody like to speak on committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Ordinance, third and final reading. Carmen. We got ordinance.
Thirty oh seven.
Yes.
All right. An ordinance to appropriate monies into the twenty twenty gaming fund.
Answered by Councilman Tyler. Is there a motion? For final passage and adoption of that ordinance?
I make a motion for final passage and adoption of ordinance twenty dash oh seven.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Tyler, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Discussion? Is there any discussion? Carmen Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Benes.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Worple.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent. That concludes reading of the ordinances, right? Item ten, resolutions, there are none. Item eleven, new and unfinished business. Does anybody have anything on the new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business, just real briefly, we did have a public hearing where the public was invited to, we gave them, I think it was ten days to respond to the republic, I mean, to the public hearing. As far as I can tell and from what I've been told, that there was no responses to that public hearing, so none were put in, is.
Say something real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, last meeting, I know Councilman Kowinski came up with the recommendation that we should wait until, if we're having a public hearing on Zoom, that we should wait one more meeting. And I read a lawsuit that is occurring in another part of the state right now on this very issue where the council and the mayor were pushing a project and they had a public hearing and they didn't, they didn't wait like you guys are doing and they got sued for it. So I think that's a good practice that we're doing right now, having a public hearing and then approving it the next meeting. It'll keep us out of litigation, in my opinion, so I wanted to thank Councilman Mark for that recommendation, so.
Anybody else got anything on the new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business is now closed. Item number twelve, public expression. Chris, is there any public online, do you know?
There are a couple of people attached, but there's no screen and I can't tell if they want to speak. They can raise their hand now if they'd like to.
Then they can raise, you can raise your hand now, I guess he means electronically raise your hand if you'd wish to speak on any issue. Does anyone, Chris, do you see anybody wanting to speak on any issue?
Uh, no hands are raised. They can also potentially unmute their mics if they'd like to speak at this time.
Okay, I'll just, again, you can also submit whatever you'd like to say publicly by email and they'll be read into the next, or this meeting's minutes and the following meeting. Seeing how there's no public expression, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion's been made by, you guys all talked at once. Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander, I believe. Mayor, thank you for addressing our questions and concerns and.
Thanks, guys.
By saying aye.
It was Council.
Who was it?
It was Councilwoman.
I don't have my, my funnel hearing aid in right now, so. You guys all be safe and we'll see you next meeting. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.